Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I would like to call it to order the Banburg County School District Board of Trustees meeting to order. Today's date is Monday, March 3rd, 2025, and it is 7:00 PM. That is item number one on the agenda. Going down to item number two is the Pledge of Allegiance in Moment of Silence. If you would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now we'll observe a moment of silence, please. Thank you. We are down to item number three on the agenda, which is Approval of the Agenda. Board members, you've had an opportunity to receive and review the agenda prior to tonight's meeting. What is the pleasure of the board with regards to approval of the agenda?
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I believe that we approve the agenda as presented from March 3rd, 2025.
All right. Motion on the floor in a second. Any discussion? Here are none. If you are in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, ayes have it, the motion carries. We are down to item number four on the agenda, which is Approval of the Minutes for February 3rd, 2025. Again, board members, you've had an opportunity to receive and review the meeting minutes. What is the pleasure of the board with regards to approval of those minutes?
I'd like to speak. I noticed one thing that I don't know may need to be corrected under Denmark Oiler High School Principal, does it need to add Dr. Simmons on there?
Okay, well, before we do that, let's go ahead and get a motion on the floor in a second, and then we can discuss that.
All right.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm glad we approved the minutes from February 3rd, 2025.
All right. Motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Motion on the floor in a second. We are now open for discussion. Can you read your saying?
Yes, on the first page where it lists the six principals, the third line down, Denmark Oiler High School Principal Simmons, it does not say doctor, I didn't know if that needed to be added or not. Just something like that.
You can add, we can add doctor to any of them that are appropriately to be added. Okay. Are there any others?
On page seven, number 19, the paragraph with Board Chair Dennis Walker. Superintendent Dottie Brown had formally notified the Banburg County School District Board of Trustees. It has for her decision, I think it should be of her decision to retire.
Okay. Okay, those are some minor adjustments.
Yes.
So we have a motion on the floor in a second, and discussion is for that page, which is seven. It should be of.
Yes.
You'll take a look at what was already in there and make the necessary corrections for the doctors. Any other discussion?
I believe that the minutes of February 3rd, 2025, we accepted the corrections named especially the one on page seven.
Okay, well, you'll need to rescind your motion. You'll need to rescind your motion. We can make an amendment if you want to do that.
Madam Chair, I'm going to rescind my motion to approve the February 3rd, 2025.
Madam Chair, I would like to take the motion that we approved of Board of Trustees from February 3rd, 2025 with the correction of on page seven changing the District Board of Trustees for all sort of children and, sorry, and whatever other corrections to be made.
Dr. Johnson and Dr. Simmons? Those two? Okay. All right, so we have an amended motion to make the necessary corrections. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion on the floor, is there a second? Any further discussion? Here are none. If you are in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, ayes have it, the motion carries. We are down to item number five, which is School Reports, and I'll turn that over to Dr. Brown.
Good evening, everyone. You have in your board packets a school report from all of the principals. It's your standard school report. It lists the current enrollment, the discipline. You have the elementary winter map testing data, but keep in mind, we're doing spring testing as we speak. That will go on for the next month. The principals will be back next month to review all of that data with you guys, so you can read each of their school reports. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer them, or you can leave. Any questions?
I don't have a question, but I wanted to just note the several students that had their artwork on display at the South Carolina Art Education Association, Lower Region Youth Art Month Exhibition. Laura Lai Templeton in sixth grade, Mia Pacheco in eighth grade, and Riley, I'm not sure how to pronounce her last name, Boosier in the eighth grade were the three that I saw. There's out of that.
Thank you. The only thing that I wanted to mention, Dr. Brown, is on the Denmark Oiler Elementary School report, Dr. Johnson under item number two has discipline report for the third quarter seventeen referrals. This is my breakdown of what that is. I don't know if that was omitted or what, but we'd like to continue to see that.
I'll remind them. Reinsert that for next month.
Yes, ma'am. That's all I had on that.
Dr. Brown, I also want Banburg Earhart High School Report studying the issue of the discipline. He's got the numbers, but we got to have a breakdown.
I have a question on the Banburg Earhart package.
No, before, before you do that, yeah, so he, yeah, he gives us a number, but he doesn't give us, he gives us the number by the month, but doesn't let us know what that is. You're absolutely correct on that, Mr. Porter, so.
And I may be known to this person, so we insert that.
Okay.
I see that there's a Banburg Earhart High School STEM note on March 26th, and I was wondering if that is a new grant.
This is only the E-buddy.
Do you know what time it's due?
I don't. I, we can find that out, so I'll have to get that to you. I have a question, Mr. Smith.
Are there any other elements on the report?
So that I mentioned to the faculty program, I knew it actually.
And I was mentioning that in my superintendent's report.
Very good.
The students' notes are in the year of the conference.
Good.
We will move on down to item number six, which is Athletic Report. And I believe that we have Mr. Williams here tonight. And before Mr. Williams starts, the principals will be back here next month.
Yes, ma'am.
But Mr. Williams will not be able to attend next month, so that's why he's coming this month, so we won't see him next month. Go ahead, Mr. Williams.
Good evening.
Good evening.
To give you a quick recap of our winter sports season, it ends this coming Thursday, but the Denmark Oiler Girls and Boys Basketball won the region, and Banburg Girls and Boys both finished second, and the Denmark Girls made it to the lower state. They got eliminated this past Thursday, and the Denmark Boys will be playing for the state championship this Thursday in Florence at 4:00 against Hattieville. If you want to make that trip, I'm sure they would love to see you there. I also want to congratulate Adrian Walker from the Denmark Oiler Girls. She made the Little South game, and will be played at Brooklyn KC on March 29th. Banburg Earhart Wrestling, they finished the season at 22-8 and made it to the second round of the playoffs. They had eight boys and one girl that qualified for the individual championships, and it was happening in Florence, February 21st and 22nd. And also, I put the spring sports schedules in your packet. I tried to put them all on my calendar, so if you have to pick anything you want to, and there's a good day going on. Any questions?
I just have a quick question. I really appreciate the calendar that you included. That's very helpful for the spring sports. Is this available to the public or to the community at all if they wanted to?
I can probably get them to make it available.
Okay.
I don't know how to do that, but I'll make it to somebody.
Perfect.
Try to put on a website.
Thank you. I know our community likes to support our team.
I appreciated that as well, because it just put everything right there, so you didn't have to go back and find some. Thank you.
And that will change with the rain and weather and all that stuff. All right?
All right. Thank you, Professor Williams. All right, next up, we have item number seven, which is Student Staff Recognition and Superintendent's Report, and I will turn that over to Dr. Brown.
The question for me is I'd like to extend a heartfelt sincere gratitude to all the students, staff, and administrators for their time and dedication and efforts in organizing some exceptional Black History Month programs. Ms. Horst mentioned earlier, they were phenomenal, the ones that I attended, from the students' performance to the staff's performance, to the choirs, to the bands. It was just phenomenal. So just want to thank all of them for the work and efforts that went into those programs. I also wanted to thank our guest speakers that attended all of those programs and special guests that attended all those programs, and the community and parents that came out to support our schools and those programs. It was, they were well attended, and that was great to see. Second, we got this late today. It is an out-of-state field trip request. I think Jessica has provided you a copy. It is from the RCE Safety Patrol and Robotics Club. They're asking to go to Carolins, which, as you know, Carolins is split. Half is in South Carolina and half of it's in North Carolina, therefore it has to come for the board. That's considered out-of-state field trip. It's not overnight, but it is out of state. And it is, oh, it's on the second page, sorry. Day of trip is April the 11th, 2025. Just have to flip to the second page. And they'll leave around 6:00 AM in the morning to get there when they open, and they'll return around 8:00 PM that night. Individual students, when the permission slips are returned, that list of students will be provided to the district office at that time. Of course, that depends on who brings the permission slips back. That's why it's not attached here. And then you have a list of the chaperones, and I'm bringing that to the board tonight to, for consideration to grant this request.
Okay. You'll want to take a look at that, and I'll entertain a motion when you're ready.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I want to make a motion that we approve the RCE Safety Patrol Robotics Club Out-of-State Field Trip for April 26th.
Second. All right. Motion on the floor in a second. Any discussion? Here are none. If you are in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, ayes have it, motion carries. Okay?
And the last thing I had to bring forward is I always give you an update on the district enrollment, and as you can see, the last time we pulled district enrollment was the end of February. We ended the month of February with 1,805 students enrolled in the district, pre-K through 12 grades. Also, we'll talk about this in just a minute. I did want to say, as a recognize and thank, all the principals, assistant principals, all the math teachers, math curriculum coordinators, math team leads for their hard work that they've extended the last month or so on selecting the new textbooks. As you know, we're required by the state to adopt new math textbooks for the school year beginning 2026. This is, is a grave undertaking anytime we adopt new textbooks. A couple of years ago, it was ELA. Three years ago, it was science. Two years ago, it was ELA. This year's math's up, so guess what's next? I'll guess. It's such a, anyway, I just, that is a phenomenal undertaking, and we follow the procedures of the state when, through that process, and I'll explain more of that when we get to that item on the agenda. But I just wanted to thank all the principals, the math teachers, and send a special thank you and give recognition to Ms. Charlotte Slamp, who has led in that process, who been a great help in that process, because that's a lot of work.
Well, we are down to item number eight on the agenda, which is Request for Out-of-State Overnight Trips. And Dr. Brown?
Yes, ma'am. So bring to you two of these on tonight in addition to the STEM one. Banburg Earhart Softball Team is wishing to go to Northern Beach. They do this every year, kept for a number of years now. Go to the Grandstand Softball Classic, April 19th through April 26th, and all the information there is provided for you. Also, federal programs, professional development, which is required of the district. This is for Ms. Phil Sova Street and Mr. Von Fern to attend federal programming professional development this year in New Orleans, Louisiana, and that is in July, July 14th through July 17th. So I'm bringing both of these to the board for consideration tonight.
Okay, board members, you've had an opportunity to receive and review these prior to tonight's meeting. What is the pleasure of the board with regards to these two particular trips?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I believe that we accept both the DEHS softball team's request to go to Northern Beach for the exam stand softball class, which will be from January 26th, and also Ms. Overstreet and Ms. Star to attend the federal program conference in New Orleans, which will be from July 14th through July 17th.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
A motion on the floor in a second, any discussion? Here are none. If you are in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, ayes have it, the motion carries for approval of those two requests for Banburg Earhart Softball and Southern Grant School.
Also, Ms. Horst, to answer your question, the DEHS STEM night program starts at 6:00 PM. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we are down to item number nine, which is District Math Textbook Selection.
Yes, ma'am. So as I was saying earlier, every few years, the state comes out mandates that every district go through the textbook's adoption selection process, and this year is math. So we have gone through that process, and I just want to explain, I know we have some new board members tonight. If you are not familiar with this process, it starts at the State Department in the year that we're, adoptions are up. The State Department's kind of like the procurement process. They send it out to vendors that they're up, vendors send in their products to the State Department. The State Department this year had 75 vendors that submitted for math textbook adoptions. They have a committee that was comprised of over 200 members, made up of administrators, teachers, curriculum specialists, school level and district level administrators. They have a very stringent rubric that they go by vetting all of these vendors and their products, and they weed it down to four to five that's approved by level, elementary, middle, secondary, and then they send their approved adoptive list out to the districts. And then the districts begin their own process of selecting their textbooks that meets the needs of their students, because that's going vary by school. What might work for children in Charleston or Greenville might not work for students in Banburg County. So our teachers, we form teams that vet the four or five approved list from the State Department, those vendors. They go to textbooks showcase events, and then they visit what's called the caravans. And literally, these are caravans by these vendors that travel around from the uptight to the low country, so that school districts have opportunity to send individuals to those caravans to actually see, feel, and interact with the materials. So we've gone through that process, following the same process that the State Department follows, and I bring to you tonight the textbooks that have been selected by our school committees for board adoption. And this requires board action. You have to approve what we have selected so that they can be adopted as part of our curriculum for next school.
And that's principal.
Yes, ma'am. And you have in front of you a list of those for K through five. Teams have selected already by curriculum associates for grade 6 through 8. The textbooks in Vision, the Savas Learning.
Excuse me, we don't have, we don't have the books.
Okay, I'm sorry. These are the textbooks that Ms. Moody has put on the back counter, as we did with the ELA adoption and the science adoptions over years ago. They're separated by grade bands. You see the K through fifth grade, the high school, is that the second one back there? I can't. Yeah, 6 through 8. And then the high schools are not back there. Are they, are they on the?
That side, yes.
Okay, the Savas ones. They're back there on the right-hand side. So there's three stacks for middle school and then the high school over there by you to your right, Ms. Walker.
All right, so these are for who?
Middle schools are first stack, should they?
Middle.
The other four are for high schools.
All of these are middle school. And this is high school. Are any of these following the same committee as in the past?
The Savas is new, and we have used curriculum associates in the past. Yes, ma'am. It's a good one.
May I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
Just as having been a teacher, this is wonderful, because you actually can put your hands on them, you can look to see what skills are offered, how it is correlated with your curriculum. If you have visually impaired students, there may be some notation over there on the side that will suggest what you can do for that particular child. It's just a good, you get to put your hands on them, you get to thumb through, what is it you like about it? There's some things that maybe are not aligned with what. So I think teachers really appreciate that opportunity. We did not have the van, the caravan, or whatever it came, but they would put them all out in the library, and you'd use your planning time or after school throughout that period, and then teachers would get together and say, did you look at this one? Didn't you like the way they did such and such?
And that is exactly right.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
It does.
It is a lot of work.
Because once you get it, that's what you got.
Okay, so those are the books that have been selected.
Yes, ma'am.
Did any board member want to take a look at them?
And they'll be there if you all, you know, can come back, do it after the meeting later this week. We'll leave them back there. I would encourage you to come as soon as you can, though, because we do need to get these back to the schools. But we'll leave them back there for a few days.
Those ones the teachers have chosen.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, so it says actions needed, so what's pleasure of the board with regards to the district math textbook selections?
Madam Chair, I believe that we accept the suggestion of the teachers for the district math textbook selection.
All right.
As listed.
We have a motion on the floor in a second. Any discussion? Here are none. If you are in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, ayes have it, the motion carries. Those are approved.
Thank you. I know the teachers appreciate you.
We are down to item number 10, which is Approval of a 2025-26 School Calendar. Again, so.
I believe it's that time. Here it is, the draft calendar. So, Mr. Ulmer and all of the principals, assistant principals, again, we pull together a team, we start drafting this calendar around winter break, and we think we have it, well, we know, we have it to the point where it comes to you guys now. We have drafted and pre-drafted and edited and re-edited this year, again, starting school around the same time. We've incorporated the required number of professional development days for teachers. We've also incorporated not only the minimum required number of makeup days, we actually built in two extra this year, given that the experience we had this school year with having two makeup days. And on that note, I would like to say that I want to thank the board for your patience and also your help in deciding on days for us to make up. We have now made up all of our days, so let's all pray that no other event's going to happen to make us miss school. If they do, I just wanted to say this to the board and to the public who may be listening, we have one makeup day left on our calendar, and that is Good Friday this school year, but so we won't need to use it. But if we do have to be out for another day for whatever reason, that would be our last makeup day of the year. If we go beyond needing to make up one day, we will have to tack that on to the end of our school year calendar. And of course, I'll bring that back to the board informing of that. So, getting back to this draft calendar, I say all that to explain why we thought it would be a good idea not to just incorporate the three minimum required makeup days on every school calendar for every district, but we put in, we built in two extra, just in case we need them.
I'm sorry.
They're color-coded gray. So October 9th and 10th are your first two, and then February 13th is your third, and April 3rd is your fourth, I'm sorry, February 13th and 17th are your third and fourth, and April 3rd is your fifth.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry.
It's fine. It's fine. You drafted, you got me too, Ms. Horst. It blends in with the gray.
I thought that this year, the actual calendar was very cooperative with us, and I do notice we don't have intervention days. But I know that the schools have really accommodated for intervention during the day.
Yes, ma'am. We've been able to build that into our master schedule, so the principals had a lot of study in that, and we're going to continue that, building that into the master schedule so that every child gets it throughout the day.
But it looks like even unless we, you end up using the makeup days in October, there's still a little bit of a fall break.
Yes, ma'am. So if we don't, and you're exactly right, fall and winter, if we don't need those makeup days, we get those days. days, we get those days. Therefore, I present a draft calendar to the board tonight for first reading, first reading.
Okay, board members, you've had an opportunity to not only review the calendar prior to tonight's meeting, but to hear a little bit of the discussion from Dr. Brown. So, what is the pleasure of the board with regards to first reading of the school calendar for two thousand twenty-five through two thousand twenty-six?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I move that we accept the twenty-five, twenty-six Bamberg County School District Calendar for first reading.
Second. We have a motion on the floor in a second. Any discussion? Here are none, if you're in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it, the motion carries.
Thank you.
First reading is approved. We are down to item number eleven, which is the second reading of Bamberg County School District Policy Section E, and again, I will turn that over to Dr. Brown.
Okay, so if you recall from last month, we had first readings of some required district policies and some revisions to a couple of our existing policies, but I'll start with ECAH, which is relative to drones. We had much discussion about this last month and the month before, so I'll bring them back tonight for second reading. ECAH and ECAHR, unmanned aircraft systems, drones.
I am sorry, I still believe that this document has a contradiction on the second page. It's in C and D, right at the top. It says it's seen several people difficult operating with drones without district approval, prior written parent consent and the supervision of the FAA certified drone pilot. And then D says all drones being operated in outdoor areas of the district shall only be flown by licensed FAA certified drone pilots. I believe that perhaps we would want to put for their supervision, the supervision of the FAA.
That's fine, that makes sense, we can do that.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. And also, I believe that you told us that perhaps there is an age limit of sixteen, the children have to be, or the students have to be sixteen, is that, is that really part of procedure, because if you did, perhaps we should put there as a limit of eight?
You mean when Ms. Slant was talking about you have to be sixteen or older than five drones, that's if you're physically doing the control. But it could be, if that's what the board wishes to be part of the policy.
Personally, I thought it was too bad number of students could do it, but they are expensive. But anyway, I don't know if we should or should not just mention very much, there will be an age limit.
Well, if the FAA has, you know, an age restriction, I don't necessarily know if it requires for us to indicate that specifically, but it's whatever the board wants to.
I feel like the language, I just feel like we should refer to the language in the FAA policy, because we're not trying to rewrite.
Right.
And if we put in language that is specific to limitations, that may not be consistent with the FAA policy, it could be more confusing.
And again, you are referencing the FAA handbook under your legal reference is the end of the policy.
Well, this primarily be giving the child to the home will, or the other?
It could be any STEM class.
Any STEM class?
If they wanted to use drones.
Could it be after-school class, I'd like to know.
But again, this means like a sixteen-year-old.
According to the FAA, FAA, excuse me. But again, only, only if that licensed pilot is there supervising those students or those classes.
You want to make a motion, Ms. Harsh?
Yes, ma'am. I would like to move that we adopt policy ECAH, unmanned aircraft systems, drones, with the addition of section, not policy, number, or letter D, we're going to add bullet, it says all drones being operated in the upper areas of the district shall only be flown by licensed FAA certified drone pilots or with their supervision of student pilots.
Want to write down, just as a suggestion?
Yes.
Or flown under the supervision of an FAA certified drone pilot.
Okay, that's fine, thank you for the suggestion.
Okay, so, can you read that again?
Adding on to the end of D, or flown under the supervision of an FAA certified drone pilot.
You agree with that?
Should we add according to federal regulations under Part One and Section?
I don't think we should.
No, we should read that.
If you got it, my question is a footnote.
You've got it. Okay. So, we have a motion on the floor that we approve a second reading with that addition, is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a second. Is there any further discussion? Here are none, if you're in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it, the motion carries on those two, on that policy. We are down to...
Next policy is EBA, and as we discussed last month, this is relative to district-owned vehicles and operators of district-owned vehicles. I bring to you tonight for second reading production of these policies.
Okay, what's pleasure of the board?
Will we leave that additional verbiage part of ECAHR all same, with the two Ds?
Are you going backwards? Are you talking about this policy now?
I'm not talking about the vehicles, I'm still on drones, so there are two policies for drones. We approved the first one, but this is the second one, ECAHR.
I can, I can answer that, Ms.
Go ahead.
Yes, Ms. Harsh, we'll make the same correction, it's just like last month, I think it was Ms. Bunch that wanted verbiage changed it, so wherever that is, we will make it have the same verbiage.
Sure, welcome.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so, we are now talking about policy EBA and EBA-R.
I would like to make a motion to approve these policies, EBA and EBA-R as written.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor that we approve a second reading of EBA and EBA-R. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion on the floor in a second, any discussion? Here are none, I'm sorry?
Yes, one question.
Sure.
This is on EBA-R, it's the third page, and it says that district-owned vehicles should not be used to transport any individual who is not directly or indirectly related to district-owned vehicles. Family members should not be transported in district-owned vehicles.
Where, where, which policy?
It's on EBA-R, it's in the fourth. And it prohibits family members from being transported in district-owned vehicles, but what if that child has been selected, she goes, the event that the mother is adopting?
Oh, we have, the parents give, we have permission forms for that, and waivers as well.
I don't believe that, excuse me.
Go ahead.
But I don't, I don't believe that part, it would be like if our athletic director was taking the van of from one point A to point B, and he had his daughter with. I think that's what that means, it doesn't necessarily mean official business, like a field trip or anything like that.
I thought it meant that no matter what child, his child could not go until he was adopted.
No, I don't, I don't interpret that that way, I don't know if any other board member does.
No, it's, it is as Mr. Porter outlined, it's not the way I think you, you might be interpreting it a little bit differently.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Here are none, if you're in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it, the motion carries, we are down to item number twelve, which is the second reading of Bamberg County School District Policy, Section I, for instruction.
And as you know, these were existing policies, but we had some guidance counselors and principals that wanted to make some corrections to these policies, and we spoke about those last month, so I'll bring these back to you guys tonight for approval. Second reading.
Okay. All right, board members, you have read this prior to tonight's meeting, we had a first reading last month, this is a second reading. What's the pleasure of the board with regards to approval of a second reading for IKD-R and IKE?
Madam Chair. I'd like to make a motion that we make the second reading of policies IKD-R and IK, second.
Motion on the floor in a second, any discussion?
I'm sorry, I have a discussion about this, too.
Sure.
On IKE, on the first page, it has a promotion criteria for grade thirteen, and then the grades one through three. But we know now that there is a specific Read to Succeed State Mandated Retention for Grade Three. That actually is on page three, but I wonder if perhaps this should only be for grades one and two, and then grade three is separated from it.
And again, this is the board's, it's up to the board if you want to change your verbiage on that part. However, I think the intent was for when the principals, when we did this initially, was when it was one through three, that these were in addition to, and outside of Read to Succeed. For grade three.
But now we do have Read to Succeed.
But Read to Succeed is only for reading, so if you pass reading, but you fail math or other subjects, you have to have other criteria for promotion for grade three.
In the series of bullets at the bottom, we're asking this, these are reasons why the district will promote retaining your students, does not meet expectation in the South Carolina.
Where are you?
It's on the first page of this IK, right at the last, under the bullet of Review of Progress on Academic Assistant Plan, Assistance Plan. I wonder if that's where it should just mention, that if they have not met the expectation on South Carolina, ready to read, and that would be another reason.
So, in other words, you want to turn in Read to Succeed State Mandated Retention for third grade, add a bullet down Failure to Meet. Read to Succeed requirements. That's up to the board again.
I think they've said to me this for the first time, that they think, oh, my kid's got it, no problem, oh, wait a minute, on to the third page, oh, now we have this academic issue.
Read to Succeed.
So, I don't know, it might be over.
It's completely up to the board?
I don't think it's over still.
May I also make a comment? On the third page, the section titled Retention, grades one and two, grade four through eight, the last sentence, the action of retention will be in the best academic interest of the student and will be based on the professional judgment of the school-based instructional personnel with the ultimate decision made by the principal. I would like to suggest inserting, based on the professional judgment of the school-based instructional personnel in consultation with caregiver and guardian, or parent and guardian, I think is the way that it's worded on the last page, yeah, parent slash legal guardian, in order to be consistent with the rest of the policies, most of the rest of the policies include parent and legal guardian in those types of decisions, and I would like to suggest that we insert that as part of that decision-making process. With the ultimate decision still being made by the principal.
Jessica, are you notating this?
I wrote it in.
You wrote it down?
Yes, ma'am, and again, it's like Ms. Bunch said, getting consistent with the language in this, but page four, I think they tried.
So, are we recent, are we going to resend the motion, and we're going to start over? We're going to resend the motion? And are we going to make these corrections and then bring this back to the board? What are we going to do? Because what we're not going to do is continue to tear apart these policies, you've had the first reading, and then we're coming to a second reading, and I can understand if we have a typo or something like that, but what we're not going to do is revisit this stuff over and over again. So, who made the motion, correct me? Who made the motion?
I'm next.
So, resend your motion, we're going to take all this back, add all of this, add all of this, are there any other suggestions or corrections? Add all of this and bring this back? Next spot. We're not going to move forward on that.
And is that just for IKE?
So, Madam Chair, we sent the motion for acceptance of the second reading of policy I, IK, IKE, I guess.
Okay, do we have any other suggestions or corrections you guys would like to?
I have, I have a question.
Sure.
That's okay, just, just for clarity. What I heard in finality was the suggestion made by Mrs. Jenny Bunch, adding the same verbiage on that page three as page four. Did I miss anything else? Or did Jessica, because you'll be the one making the?
I think that the board did not wish to support my, of course, that was included on page one.
No, it's not that the board didn't want to support it, but, but I don't want us to go back and forth on these policies, and we're tearing them apart after we've already approved them the first time. So, since we're going to address it, let's go ahead and address what you'd like to have, and take all of that back, and then you can bring that back for a second reading, so we can not...
I withdraw, I mean, I am withdrawing, if I have misinterpreted it, I admit perhaps I've misinterpreted some.
Okay. So, do you have all of the wording? Do y'all think y'all have the wording? And if you, if you think you do, can you read that to the board?
Okay, so...
Give us the page number, give us the paragraph, give us the bullet.
On page three. On page three.
Okay.
Under the heading Retention, grades one and two, grades four through eight. It is the one, two, third sentence, that Ms. Bunch is asked to amend that sentence, to read this way, the action of retention will be in the best academic interest of the students, and will be based on the professional judgment of school-based instructional personnel, comma, in consultation with parent slash or legal guardians, comma, with the ultimate decision made by the principal. If I was right, did I catch the call?
Yes, ma'am, yes, that's right, thank you.
So, in consultation with parent, that's slash legal guardian, comma. Again, for clarity, is the other, is the other one what's wrong? Is the other, is the other one what's wrong?
Yeah.
So this is the only one we'll bring back for second reading? So the other ones I'm good to make changes.
Those were fine, those were minor, those were easy. This one I want to make sure we get it right.
That's IKD-R and IKE.
Yes, sir.
Don't we need the motion tabled?
Yes, we did.
Madam Chair, I make the motion that we tabled Policy IKD, motion retention acceleration of students until the next meeting when the corrections that are suggested be made.
All right, we have a motion on the floor in a second.
Second.
All right, motion on the floor in a second, any further discussions? Hear or none? If you're in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it, the motion carries. We're tabling that to the next meeting with the added corrections, bring it back. We're both committed.
Madam Chair, we're going to need a motion and a vote, a motion and action need for IKD-R.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I make the motion that we approve the second reading of administrative rule IKD-R.
Second. Motion on the floor and a second, any discussion? Hear or none? If you're in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it, the motion carries. So IKE is coming back next month. Did we miss anything else? We good? We move on?
We've put them together.
So before we open up the door on item number 13, the second reading for Bamberg County School District Policy, Section K, does anybody have anything that they want to talk about about policy KB?
I have just a question, nothing to change. On the second page, this policy refers to the district annual report, and I just wondered when that normally is provided to the board.
When we give the annual report of progress versus strategic plans, that's when the report cards come out, I made public. But when the report cards first come out, they're embargoed. So as soon as the state lists the embargo, then the superintendent brings to the board your school report card reports, and that report is folded in on that because it's part of the school report.
Okay. Thank you.
On page two.
You talking about the second bullet down at the bottom?
Yes, yes.
So Jessica, on page two of KB, there was just a notice that the font was different, probably a size eleven, maybe, versus the rest of the font being a twelve. I don't know if that's any particular reason, maybe to fit it on the page, I don't know. Anybody got anything to add? I think I'm getting here then. All right, we're good. Ms. Cindy, good catch. What's the pleasure of the board with regards to second reading of Policy KB, Parent and Family Engagement in Education?
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I believe that we accept section KB.
Well, with the, with the, with the font.
With the font, yes.
Okay, updated. All right, we have a motion on the floor that we accept the second reading of Policy KB with the font being a move from eleven to the twelve. We have a second on the floor, any further discussion? Hear or none? If you're in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it, the motion carries. We are down at number fourteen, which is the Skagel Bond Resolution.
And I will introduce this about them. Mr. Danner.
With our bonds, he will take over. Thank you.
You know what, you should have a resolution prepared by Franny Heiser with Burr Foreman and there. This is a standard Skagel resolution that you all adopt and other districts adopt every year. It's, our calculation is that based on your eight percent capacity, based on maintaining your village without tax increase, that you can issue up one million dollars in Skagel bonds for the purpose of capital projects. These monies can't be used for operations, as all we know, it has to be used only for capital and needs. We've run some preliminary numbers, worked with the bond, Ms. Brown, and we've come up with a number of one million that you all will be able to issue. Be glad to answer any questions. It probably has a not to exceed amount, I'm not sure, but we should put on a not to exceed. One million, one hundred thousand. The reason is not an exact one million, but we have top of issuance, it'll be added. And if there's extra money in the debt service fund just before we issue, then we might take it up a few thousand to make sure that the number is rounded out, but for the most part, plan on one million dollars coming in. The bonds will be sold on April the twenty ninth, along with the other school districts participating in the program this year. The money should be available to the district somewhere around May the fifteenth to May the twentieth, and so you'll have it in time to do capital construction projects in the district over the summer of all the children in office school. Be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Will it one? It doesn't stand last for like three years, is that what you say?
The districts over the years have issued through the Skagel program almost every year. I think last year, maybe the year before, the district issued a two-year bond because they increased the size because the projects were more than just a million dollars that they needed to do. So we structured that two million dollars on the two-year payment solely from the standpoint of keeping the village well-kept. I would point out that I think the debt service mileage this year was one oh four. The state authorized through Representative Bamberg, put some language into the state budget, two, three years ago, that allocated five million dollars to the school district for debt service. Took us almost, it was two, two years, I think, to get that money cleared from the state where it could be invested, put in an escrow account, start making payments on your debt. We anticipate that that's probably going to reduce the debt service mileage by about six mils for this coming year. So you can still issue the same amount you can issue with a million dollars, but it should be around ninety-eight mils, so be under a hundred, so it's a six mil reduction, solely from that money that came from the state and was put into that account. That investment account is set up so that it would draw down over, I think, through twenty thirty-five, which is the term of all the old bonds that were on the debt structure from District One prior to the consolidation. So it actually is reducing the debt service mileage a little bit from those old District One bonds. I haven't spoke to y'all because you're anymore, but when consolidation happened, all the debts of District One, all the debts of District Two became the District, Bamberg County School District's debt, all the assets came to be your assets, all of the debt service funds that were at the treasurer's office became your debt service funds to go pay for huge debt. So, you know, it's kind of all in one at this point in time, but it should have a reduction in the overall mileage down to ninety-eight. The auditor is the ultimate person that makes that decision on what the debt service knowledge is each year, but Devon and I are committed to go and talk with them before the second millage for twenty-five, twenty-six, and try to show them again our calculations as to what we think that mileage should be.
I believe the school districts are allowed to do any good mileage until transplant.
Debt service mileage is different than the operational mileage. This is, this is, the legislature didn't factor eight percent constitutional debt limit. So the debt service mileage is set based on what the debt service payments are that the board authorizes under their constitutional debt limit. So there's not anything that the legislature really does to affect that, that's in the constitution, that you have the authority under the constitution to issue up to eight percent of your assessed value. And this is not issuing a hundred percent of your eight percent capacity, you're maintaining some capacity that will tie it back to the fact that the village doesn't exceed a certain number.
All right, what's the pleasure of the board with regards to the Skagel Bond Resolution?
I believe that we approve the presentation about issuing the Skagel Bond Resolution as presented tonight. Question?
All right, so we have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Yes.
Motion on the floor and a second, any discussion? Hear or none? If you're in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it, and the motion carries with regards to approval of the Skagel Bond Resolution that will be adopted today.
Thank you all, and just in case anybody ever asks, Skagel bonds are competitive with sol, so you'll get the rate that the entire pool gets, you get the top rating that the state has to offer for these, and it'll all be on a competitive basis, so the day that we go to market, you'll get the absolute lowest interest rate that's available for you. Thank you all, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Danner. All right, next up is the monthly financial report. Devon?
You have your monthly financial report in your packet, I'll answer any questions. I will tell you, it's about time to start planning for budgets, so I will, I'll begin with after tomorrow's Skagel Day, when I go back, I'll start budget meeting with the principals and then come to y'all for voting.
Sounds good. Okay. Board members, you've had an opportunity to review and receive the monthly financial report prior to tonight's meeting. What's the pleasure of the board with regards to the financial report?
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I make the motion that we discuss the financial effects of the.
We have a motion on the floor and a second, any discussion? Hear or none? If you're in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it, the motion carries. We're down to item number sixteen, which is visitors' comments, and we have no visitors that has signed up for comments, so we will now move down to item number seventeen, which is executive session. What is the pleasure of the board with regards to going into executive session?
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I believe that we will move to executive session, both to discuss employment personnel matters related to personnel recommendations for hire, personnel recommendations for resignation, to discuss matters related to release of students, and to legal advice on superintendent search.
All right, we have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Motion on the floor and a second, any discussion? Hear or none? If you're in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it, the motion carries. We will now move into executive session to discuss employment personnel matters related to personnel recommendations for hire, personnel recommendations for resignation, to discuss matters related to release of students, and to discuss legal advice on superintendent search. All of that. We are now in executive session.
Madam Chair.
I make the motion to adjourn the meeting.
I make the motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor and a second that we move out of executive session and move back into open session. Any discussion here or none? If you have favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, we are now back into open session and we are down to item number 18 on the agenda. What is the pleasure of the board with regards to any executive session items?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we accept the personnel information for reservations to A and B and that we also accept the related leases to students numbers one, two, and three.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion on the floor and a second. Any discussion here or none? If you are in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it, motion carries. We are down at item number 19, which is to adjourn the meeting. What's the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair.
I make the motion to adjourn the meeting.
All right, we have a motion on the floor and a second. Any discussion here or none? If you are in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it, motion carries. Meeting is adjourned.